Said she's running a little bit late, so we'll go ahead and get started here and then she'll join us here shortly. Whenever she gets here. All right, I want to welcome you all to a special meet, um, special work session meeting scheduled for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. And with that, we'll open the meeting fifteenth. Paper's wrong, sorry. Sheet says fourteen. Oh, the notice on fourteen, my bad, my bad. You, you are correct. August fifteenth. With that, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Van Houden?
Here.
Mr. Yell.
Here.
Mrs. Feeback, there we have a corn present.
All right, thank you. We officially need to do that, but go ahead and do it anyways. All right, with that, we'll get into this. Uh, this is a budget work session, another one of many, and Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor, unless anybody else wants to present. But I assume it's mostly you.
Anyone else would like the floor, I'm happy to give it to them. I'm going to sit down tonight. We want this to be a work session like we had a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago. To be in exchange, I thought that went really well where a lot of discussion happened, a lot of people engaged in the conversation. We're kind of used to doing it one way in this room where I stand up there and give a presentation and you guys ask me questions and tonight it's going to be hopefully a little more conversational. Um, the same is true with the, um, directors that are here that they can, you know, should jump in and join the conversation where they need to. So tonight, we're going to talk about, um, four things. We're going to talk about water and wastewater budgets, actually five. We're going to talk about the CIP. Then we'll talk about the fund balances, which I gave you some handouts for, and then we're going to talk about debt and the decisions that are coming up related to the budget. So I'm going to start out first with water and wastewater. So I may have to move up front to see what it says. So I'm starting out with the wastewater budget, which has, um, uh, is an enterprise fund. It is meant to, um, support itself. It is not funded by tax dollars and does not receive any tax dollars. So we need to make sure our revenue, of course, is staying pace with our costs. And the, what I projected for the revenue for the wastewater is a four percent increase in revenue, which is pretty standard with the cost of living increases we're seeing. And, um, we have an extensive rate study in progress. Um, so I'm hoping by the time we approve a budget in a few weeks that we'll have that back and can do better than just four percent. And if not, we'll approve the budget at four and then, um, make the best decision around the rates when, when that data is all ready. On the expense, I summarized the categories. There's many, many lines of data that go into this. But I did this in the major categories of the, um, expense budget. We did, as with the general fund budget, do a four percent increase for cost of living. Mr. Jacob did a great job, thank you, of, um, doing a line-by-line budget for wastewater. Um, they did it, and so we have a lot more detail and more thought that's ever gone into the budget on wastewater, which is great. And then we are looking at reductions in chemicals. He found a better way to handle one of our lift stations. We also have professional services going down related to, um, the where they go out and mark the ground. What's my word?
Locates.
Locates, thank you. Utility locates. We, um, are finding a way to save some money in that as well. And then we do have the increases for people related that, um, you're aware of using the CBIZ data. We also are going to talk tonight about the water fund. And with the water fund, that will be a, an enterprise that will be perhaps going away in the next twelve months. And so we've looked at costs that are in the water fund that will need to be taken into other parts of the operation. And there's about seventy-five thousand dollars worth of costs that moved over to wastewater. So we didn't just take everything out of water and say, well, just throw it over in wastewater. We didn't do that. So the bottom line is from twenty twenty-four's budget to the twenty twenty-five budget, we will see a profit or net from the operation of about eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for twenty-five. And that's an increase of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over the prior year. So some of the things for water, we're preparing for that merger with Water One, if that decision is made. The cost for the connection and other expenses that Water One is passing on to us is about five hundred thousand dollars. That's included in this budget. We reviewed all the expenses and transfer costs were necessary. The general fund will take on one employee. This is the proposed budget. And about thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of expenses. An example is the legal fee will not change if we don't have the water. It's just not that much legal work we do in the water department. And so that cost will have to be shared by the other entities. And that's what is represented here. Some of the things we share, um, we no longer have water to share. In the wastewater fund, they're going to take on the other employee. And then about seventy-six thousand dollars in other expenses will go over to wastewater. And then all the other expenses associated with water will get eliminated in the merger. So what does the water budget look like? This is a six-month budget. If the merger is approved, we expect it to be completed in, by the end of June. That coincides with the expiration of our contract to buy water from Miami County, and so this is basically a half-year budget. We are looking at about eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. I did, that took a four percent increase and six months worth of the operation. So we'll have about eight eight, eight eighty-eight in revenue. So then on the expenses, we did the same thing. I included the merger costs. And then you can see operations, outside services, and water-related things such as the purchase of water from Miami County. With the merger costs, the loss in that six months will be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So I wanted to point out to you that the estimated cash at the end of the year in the water fund is about one point eight million. The hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar loss, where we do set, and the net cash at the end of operations should be about one million, six twenty-five. When the time comes, council will determine where that cash should go. It may not happen in twenty-five as we wind up that operation, but sometime after June thirtieth. And then we would look at where's the best use of those funds and look at a transfer at that time. What would you like to talk about on water and sewer?
The, the two employee cost transfers?
Right.
I'm assuming where they sit now, being paid out of the water fund, that those are water dedicated employees?
Yes.
Okay. So are we gonna, we're not going to let them go, but we're going to repurpose them to another department or another task or job or something like that?
Within Public Works.
Okay.
Um, there is a need for a position in the wastewater plant with wastewater operation. And we always have need, um, in parks and streets and
Sure.
And those are included in your twenty-five proposed budget.
Is that one that's going to be inherited by the general fund? Going to be the one that was lost before, like the one that we didn't know we had?
And the short answer is yes. I was going to answer that tonight. So the answer is I did add a position in the general fund accidentally, honestly. And that is an employee, to bring that employee over from water to streets and parks.
So is that one being taken out of the regular general fund, or is it going to be put there because it's going to be transferred?
It is an additional, it's an addition to the budget for the general fund. So it will be paid by the general fund.
Prior to the elimination of water?
After.
Okay.
We'll pay him for six months out of the water fund and then
So in the general budget, it's only six months on the general budget?
And then going forward, it would be at a hundred percent.
Okay, all right. That's what I was trying to just wrap my head around. Like, it's not two that are going to general, right?
It's basically two halves for, for twenty-five.
I'm just talking about that extra position we had in there. So it's not two additional?
No.
Yeah, okay.
No, just one.
All right. Can you scroll back a screen?
Yeah.
So this is projecting that if or when the water merger happens, that we would have one point six million dollars left over in that fund?
Yes.
Are there any restrictions or limitations with what we can do with that?
In general, no.
Okay, because with it being a water, it's like an enterprise or utility fund, which you kind of gives you restrictions sometimes. So if it's going away, I wasn't sure if we were still going to be restricted.
Yes and no.
Right, generally, no.
So, so the, the first thing would have to happen is you'd have to transfer it out of that fund
Right.
into like the general fund. And, and then that would open it up.
Then it becomes unrestricted.
Exactly.
So it's just a straight
Once you move in, yeah.
Right.
So we couldn't go straight from water to like CIP? You'd have to go
No. We will, we'll follow the statute when the time comes to make sure, but
So that's more than you, when you and I talked, we thought it was a little bit lower than that?
Yep.
Yeah, that's good.
It's always have a little bit more than we think.
Yeah, because we were thinking like one point three or less, so.
We will have, we should have a profit of about three hundred thousand and twenty-five from the water, and so that added to the cash
So that helped, yeah, okay, cool.
Anything else, water, wastewater, that I can answer for you, or anyone here?
Back to wastewater for a second?
Here's revenue.
So I think it was the next page I was
Okay, and then this expense?
So we're about a hundred and eighty-eight over this year. Or we're expected to be that?
Yes.
But we're only increasing the oh, we're, oh, sorry, go back one.
Okay.
There you go, right there. So you're, you're looking at the profit being a hundred and seventy-five thousand more next year than it is this year?
That's right.
Okay. And that's just because Jacob did a good job of budgeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, he changed the operation.
Yeah, because you kind of changed the way we were doing it. So that makes sense, okay?
Yep.
Because I'm like, how are we going to make that much if we're that far behind this year? You know?
Right. No, he's definitely put in some cost-saving measures and, yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to wrap my head around that, because when you, you passed through it, I didn't want to hold you up.
Right.
So the outside services, where are we saving there?
That's, um, mostly from the utility locates and the change in that.
Did you have anything else to say, Jacob? He looked like he was going to jump on there.
Reductions in chemicals.
Right, that, that was, that seems like a lot for those two things.
You need a different microphone. You have the worst tech issues in this room.
See, that was, uh, for the line locates, the, the plan there is to, currently, we contract for those line locate services. Costs us around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. The, one of those positions that we're planning on repurposing from water, I'm planning on moving that line locate, um, in-house, um, activity in-house. I think we'll get a better product out of it and we can do it for less money. So that's kind of the trade-offs there.
Okay, all right, nice. Yeah, I knew, I figured it had to be something fairly substantial. It sounds like it. I know we were having issues with locates earlier in the year.
And last year as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year especially.
And then the people related, is that because of the transfer of the one position for the most part, or is it?
You also have, um, where there, there are CBIZ adjustments that we're doing and any changes in the cost of their medical benefits as well.
Okay, all right, cool.
Overall expenses?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Anything else, water, wastewater?
That seems fine.
I'm, I'm good for now, but thank you for that chair. I appreciate it. Okay, so now I'm going to go on to the capital improvement plan. I touched on this briefly. I'm really going to show you the same presentation because I've tried to stay focused on the additions to the CIP versus prior years. And so, um, the new projects that are in the CIP, which has been through the planning commission and they did, um, make recommendations to council that it does comply with the comprehensive plan. So we have these new projects in community development, which is the East Streamway Trail from a hundred ninety-ninth to two hundred and seventh. I believe that's on Ridgeview, not, not Rinner, right?
Ridgeview.
Ridgeview. And then also I thought you were going to say something. One that the public's really been looking for, as well as all of you, the sidewalks to run from, on South Street from, um, Mill Ridge to Webster. And we're still looking for grants and cost share with KDOT and different things to help fund that project. And then the sidewalk construction, we are doubling the budget on that to two hundred thousand. That will be a transfer that you would approve in the budget to move it over to a fund to make sure that it's held until it's spent on sidewalks.
Did we spend the money allocated for sidewalks this year?
It is still in the fund waiting, and Jacob's been working on that with, um, Allison to create the on-call so we can say this is the street and they, we've set the standard and they just go out and do it. We don't bid it every time. They're setting up the process for it.
I may add to that, um, we're getting ready, we're working with a, um, engineer HDR on that supplemental grant for the SS, sorry. Something got my throat. SS four A grant. Um, and part of that project is the sidewalk project down around two hundred and twenty-third that's, that encompasses, um, the south side would be two hundred and twenty-third, west side Webster, east side Victory, and then it connects back up by around the, the aquatic center. That project is estimated to be, the total project, the grant would be about two point two, or maybe a little bit more than that. The local shares, about four hundred and fifty-six thousand. We're, we're anticipating utilizing some of the sidewalk funds for that. We're also going to apply to the state, uh, Kansas Infrastructure Hub, hopefully to get a significant portion of that reduced so that maybe the city's cost is about a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand. That'll be coming to the, um, next governing body meeting next week, um, for review and approval on that. So some of those funds could be going towards that project. I think, if I remember correctly, the sidewalk portion of that project is around the three-quarters of a million dollars.
And that's, um, we're just, we're just going to be looking at the application for the grant next meeting?
Yeah, with, with, what it's technically called is a commitment to funding. That if we get the grant, that the governing body would commit to the local cost share. So that cost share, depending on if the state, uh, the Kansas Infrastructure Hub supports that, then that would reduce our funding substantially, um, from fifteen percent down to probably about five percent.
Okay. So at this point, it sounds like we're kind of just holding on to that money because there's going to be a larger project. So we're just budgeting each year, holding on to it. So do we have a fund that we're putting that into so we know it's being held?
Yes, it goes into, um, the city facilities, capital improvement
Okay.
Fund, uh, three-ten.
My question. I was going to say, should we create one that's just called sidewalks or something?
Not necessary. You have one for infrastructure, one for city facilities, and one for equipment.
Okay.
All right.
As long as we budget well and know that it's, know what it's in there for, I think it's fine being in the fund.
Not that you care about this process, but we reconcile those every month, um, to the, the general ledger, and then it is identified by project. The money that came into the fund, the money that's going out, all of that is regularly reconciled.
So this is in the facility one or the infrastructure one?
Facility.
Facility, so there's two twelve in there right now, or that's where it will be?
It's where it is.
It's where it is.
The hundred.
The hundred from this year is in there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And the, it was a hundred from the previous year then too, or is that how I got
No, this is the first year we did a transfer.
That was the first year, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't remember. I thought we did a hundred the previous year, but I don't know if we used to have or not.
We budgeted every year. We've never budgeted, we've never planned the transfer to do it.
Okay.
We've never held it over either too.
No.
Yeah, which is something we wanted to change, because we said we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars and then just every year not spending.
Yeah, exactly. I feel like
Some other line item.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I don't want is to go to something else.
If, if we receive the grant, then we'll want to encumber those funds, um, for twenty twenty-five so that we can carry those over.
Yeah.
Right. All right, anything else on the, um, plans, new projects in community development?
So this bottom one is the, is that whole project that we, you were just talking about, or is that, is this just the two hundred for the budget increase?
It, that is two hundred thousand for the twenty-five year to be transferred into that fund. So you would have three hundred thousand then waiting for sidewalks.
So on here, we don't have the project that he was referencing?
Um, I don't think it's in community development. I think it's in probably public facilities.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Looks like Jacob got a hold of that key.
No doubt. He texts me. I'm going to look at, I'm like barely touching.
Sad thing is we've worked on tech all day.
Um, the next group we have for capital projects is for, um, the area of public facilities. So that's everything the city owns. And so on this one, are we really focused on facilities? Um, as well as you're going to get, you're working on the donation for Wiswell Farms Park. And so we included money in here for the, um, landscape architect to start designing out what a park would look like and get that going. I think we have that in twenty twenty-six, um, as a project, once we wrap up, um, receiving of that project. We have the annual, um, stormwater, which you just created the utility in the last couple of meetings, and so there will be annual projects in the stormwater fund. And then we have, um, the aquatic center. Jacob has done a nice job of creating a five-year plan and beyond, um, to look at all the things that need to be done out there to maintain the facility we have as we pair, prepare someday for an extension or expansion of, of the facility. And then he took a really good look at the community center over on, uh, Race Street and looked at, we need to do some kitchen improvements. It needs to be painted inside. Um, we need to improve our parking lots. Some maintenance has been kind of deferred for a while. We need to get addressed, and the same with the civic center. Also, remember with any of those projects, if we were to say, sell the civic center as an example, then obviously we wouldn't be fixing up things unnecessarily. We would stop those projects if some other plan was made in this five-year period. Can I answer anything about, um, city facilities? And these are new projects. There are other city facility projects which have been on the list for a year or more.
The, uh, pool repairs that we need to do from this season with the malfunctions we had early this season, is that something separate from in, because I, I don't
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. And is that prioritized above these items, or?
It's probably a timing thing, because those are twenty twenty-four projects.
Okay.
And this list And this list starts in twenty-five and so they, by timing are prioritized to be done before the next season, so.
Gotcha.
Be closer to now. Anything else on public facilities? Okay. And trying to back up. I'm gonna start with handouts.
He's over there, going over your shoulder.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna keep my hands off, you you do it. The blue one, there we go. Okay, so the remaining category in the CIP is for transportation projects. They are exactly what they sound like. Um, we're looking at traffic signalization a hundred ninety-first street, that's a project we see um getting started now, you've approved some things to get that going and then being completed in twenty-five. Um, you will not see the stoplight at a hundred and eighty-third because that would not be funded by the city, that's the plan going in. And then we have the railroad crossing projects that where there's federal funding out there to eliminate those at-grade crossings for um drivers and so we wanna participate in that program. Um, it's quite a long-term program with a federal program as you can imagine. And then we have um Nichols Street and Hale Street, which have a similar situation where they are beyond the fix this up and keep going program, they need to be taken down and replaced as well as there's some sidewalk work involved in that as well. So um Jacob has proposed these two projects um and added into the CIP this year. What can I answer about transportation?
Just to echo on the Nichols and Hale thing, I've had quite a few citizens who have reached out about about those two streets as well and just saying, you know, there's a lot of people walk, walk that area and just the sidewalks and the road overall in general is just starting to get to a state of disrepair, so.
Just, just to elaborate on that, as we've been evaluating, looking at our pavement condition index, um now with the last two years' worth of work, those two streets really stand out as as among our worst from a pavement condition perspective. They're so far gone and and the base at the bottom is so deteriorated, they are not good candidates for, you know, certainly not a chip seal, but not even a mill and overlay. The the base won't support it, it, that would really be the throwing good money after bad, so what these projects um, you know, anticipate is a wholesale replacement sidewalk curb, street curb sidewalk, um, you know, through that right-of-way, tear everything up and replace it, because it's just too far gone to try to to patch it up on.
What will, what will replace it, like concrete or asphalt?
Yeah, we would probably go with our standard, um, you know, standard detail for a collector's street with concrete curbs, uh, an asphalt street, um, and new sidewalks in there as well.
Is there an estimated cost for each each road yet?
Uh, we we put a a real rough estimate uh in and I don't have it right in.
I think it's two million per street.
Yeah, um, and that's, that's using some real rough numbers, it just based on how many linear feeds and
Yeah.
and what we're seeing right now.
And these wouldn't qualify for cars, I'd assume, right, because aren't they have to be main streets?
Correct, yeah, these are not uh.
These are funded by us a hundred percent.
Terms of the county network, they're not eligible for, you know, not not a part of the county road network.
We got, we got plenty that are.
So we'd be, we'd be funding a hundred percent of these. I I don't know, that that could be part of the reason that that they've just continued to be deferred, but um they are a fairly significant part of our local road network and and we need to, we need to get those addressed.
It's it's a plus and a minus, the plus is that we've knocked out all the other worst ones that, so we're in pretty good shape around a lot of other areas, but then it, then the fact that those ones will take a lot more, more work than even some of the worst ones we had before, so. Little bummer on that end, but it is what it is. The only old streets.
Yeah, there's rebar exposed uh on the, on the surface there, you know, right, right now, part of our uh maintenance uh efforts is cutting that rebar away. It doesn't cause problems, it. It's in pretty rough shape.
Well, and a lot of the trees along there have grown a lot in the last thirty, forty years to where the sidewalks are, you know, a lot of roots have pushed sidewalks up, so there's a, a lot of structural stuff that's happened over the years as well.
Trees are wonderful for everything except pavement.
And they pretty much, you kind of have to do it all at the same time, right, when you do it as far as that one ro- uh one road at a time?
Yeah, we, because there, it's a one-way couplet, it would be hard to to break it into shorter pieces and have anywhere for traffic to to circulate and maneuver. I mean, we, we could look at, I I think we've got Race Street and Vine Street in between that connect Hale and Nichols. We could look at trying to break those up into into pieces to make smaller chunks.
Wise figure, then you could do it, you know, a little bit, a little bit at a time rather than having to wait longer and longer till we can fully fund it.
Sure.
Cause yeah, if it's a, a million bucks per quarter, you know, and we do a quarter at a time or something?
Yeah, that um, yeah, we can absolutely look at that and just, you know, as long as we can find a place that that creates a break that lets us still sort of traffic.
That's definitely gonna be hard on the east side, I would think. The west side's probably not as hard, but the east side of that, those roads are gonna be tougher because there's no real way to go anywhere. No, I think those are good projects we need to have on the radar.
For sure. Any other on the transportation portion, new projects?
There are specific intersection uh for the railroad crossing, I know we talked when he presented, there was like seven or eight crossings or something like that, is there a specific one we're going after first? Or haven't?
No. What they'll do is they'll come in this study that we're applying for, um, I believe they actually submitted it today. If we get the grant, they'll come in and study the, basically from two hundred twenty-third street all the way to a hundred seventy-fifth street. Um, that'll be a very substantial study, then they'll give us, they'll look at various options on what to do. You know, overpass, underpass, you know, connectivity, if there's has to be a, like a shoe fly that kind of goes around like on a hundred ninety-ninth street. Um, they'll look at those, they'll come back with cost estimates and recommendations on what to do, but they'll be looking at all of them, I've requested, um, and then at that point, the governing body and BNSF and and the engineering firm will come up to, will meet, everybody will meet and then make a a decision if there's, you know, if the a hundred eighty-third or a hundred ninety-first are the two priorities, then we'll look at those. And and a lot of it is, once the study's completed, then you have to go back through the process of actually applying for implementation funding. Um, so this is a very lengthy process, uh, but you have to get it started and you have to go through the study process first to to be able to go apply for those funds.
It's a federal deal or is it BNSF?
It'll be a combination of BNSF, uh, federal dollars and probably state dollars and also city local.
But it benefits BNSF having those crossings out of there.
They want them less dangerous.
Sure.
Great. Anything else, any other discussion on the projects? Okay, I'm gonna move forward, let's see how we do. I hit it one time. Thank you, Ashley. Um, so when we um add up the CIP and it's categorized again here by the different cata- the different CIP components, I mean, the comp plan components, the the total value over this five years is um two hundred nine million dollars. Um, each, you, when you adopt the CIP, if you adopt the CIP, you're not saying we're gonna spend this money because just an example, the railroad project that we just talked about, that's tens of millions of dollars to do those, all of those crossings. And so you will make decisions all along the way and some projects may not make it, for example, federal funding gets pulled from that railroad crossing project, there are probably a whole lot of people not working on railroad crossings. And so um, this is where you're agreeing, these are the projects that the staff should be working on, that they're strategic to the city. And then the funding decisions are made as we go along. Um, each step, I, if you will, comes to the council in general for you to approve and and have it move forward. Um, something I'd say about the capital plan is, you know, when I first got here, it was a joke that the capital CIP was a place projects went to die. And I think with this council and and the ones, the last couple of years, they've done a really good job of making that current year, the twenty twenty-five one that we've proposed, we will work really hard to accomplish what's on there and we've really done that the last two years. And so some decisions in that process are harder than others, we we know how you feel about sidewalks, we're gonna take care of that and and move forward, other projects um are much more strategic, bigger projects that require more um deliberation about. But I feel like we've created a plan that most certainly listens to the community. Um, you think about how many dollars are, we had a hundred thousand dollars in the last year's CIP for sidewalks. And this year, we're looking at three-quarters of a million on one project, it's about a million dollars on South Street plus the two hundred thousand you're gonna put over, so we're, we've come a long ways, you see parks, you see trails, you see bike paths, you see all the things that the community is asking for, Nichols and Hale, that's another great example. The CIP is evolving more and more to make sure it's meeting the wants of the community and that the, that the staff is working on the things that the community wants them to work on, so. Can I answer any more questions about capital plan? In my opinion, unless you have revisions to it, it's ready to be considered for approval. Um, we typically do that with the budget, which will be in late September, um, September twenty-second, I think, to be specific, and so um I don't see adjustments unless you direct us with adjustments tonight.
I think it's a pretty good plan and like we, like we said, you know, we'll have to approve it all along the way, but I think overall it's a pretty good plan and I think we've put a lot of work into it and so I'm excited to really start hammering some of these things out.
Good.
It's, it's very well priorit- prioritized, if you ask me, um, it is things that we've been focused on. Um, so I'm very happy with it, the challenge is gonna be funding it.
That's right.
So the total public facility projects in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, is that sewer?
Um, there is sewer there and a municipal complex and pe- big projects in small bites, if you will. Small multimillion-dollar bites, but that um progress along there, but yes, sewer and um municipal complex are the biggest ones along there. Good. I'm going to move on to um the, two of the handouts that I gave you, the two colored handouts, I'm gonna talk a little bit about um, something we don't talk about very often, even though we have it in the um snapshot, the financial snapshot every month, that we talk about the fund balances and so I wanted you to be able to see exactly how much money the city has. Um, and then what are the balances in each fund and then how can that money be spent? So that you understand the the resources and uses of of the money of the city. Thank you, ma'am. This is the worst chart I'll ever make and that's why I handed it out to everybody tonight. Um, this is in numerical order, it's all of the funds of the city, which totals uh twenty-seven, just over twenty-seven million dollars. Um, that money is here locally, um, we are required, if we can, to keep the money locally. Um, there's about ten million dollars of it in CDs and the remainder is in a checking account, which we're looking at options to help us make a little more money on that, well, a lot more money on that balance. Um, each fund is uh, has a different purpose and a different type and so I started to be like old school with overheads to say, okay, now when I take these out, this is what you have, and when I take those out. Um, the general fund as an example, has a pretty high balance in it, however, it is your operating budget, so it is committed um to the operating budget, so that isn't one that you have a lot of opportunity to spend any other way than your budget without making, jumping through some hoops. Um, you'll see down lower in the five hundred range, I believe, there are a lot of donation funds, like when we raise money for the mayor's Christmas tree goes in its own fund, then we donate it as proper and then it goes to a low balance, so there are donation funds that are meant to be spent for what the donations were made. Um, there are debt funds, those debt funds are exactly what they sound like. The one is the one that makes the general obligation payments and the others are bond funds we've received in, like twenty twenty-three A and twenty twenty-three B where we're spending that, those bonds, um, and then we'll pay the debt on them out of the debt fund as well as the one is a temporary note. So my point in telling you all this is I will answer any question about any of these funds that you'd like to talk about. But I also wanna make sure that you understand the shorter list, which is where money is more what I call unencumbered, that you have more opportunity to choose, pick and choose how those funds get spent. Um, that makes sense within our, you know, our overall goals and strategies for the city. So I'm gonna put the shorter list up, but I'm happy to answer questions about any of these funds, so I'm gonna, next page. Thank you. So in this shortlist, these are the unencumbered funds and um at the bottom two, I peeled out the two utility funds because they are self-supporting and they have to um the, the money in those funds have to be spent on those activities and they're meant to support themselves and I, I can't say often enough for the public that tax dollars do not go in those two funds, they support themselves, so. The other funds on this list um are a, a variety of different um operations, for example, economic development, that typically comes from bond um fees that we receive to the city, we put in this fund. We've only spent about two thousand dollars out of that fund in the last um two years and the balance is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, if you chose an activity that makes sense to economic development, we could spend it out of this fund. Um, we receive consolidated highway tax, which is a um, is defined by statute, those are meant for hard surface roads and we receive um an allocated portion based on population um for these, for taxes um four times a year, we receive about two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year right now in these taxes and that is spent on road, street maintenance every year. I'm recommending that that one point five million in that fund be put towards street maintenance, this is where you would fund Ni- Nichols or Hale, you know, something like that. It's also where the routine maintenance, which we've been, I did that, where we have um been, we use some bond money, we use some ARPA funds and those things are, are going away, this is an opportunity to put this money on streets. And it's what I would, I would recommend. Um, special parks comes from alcohol tax and that is meant to be spent on parks. Um, fire, with the elimination of the fire district, we will um have as a surplus in this fund that like the water fund, you'll be able to transfer out and choose a different home for it when the time comes. Then we have the capital improvement facilities fund that I talked about earlier, which is money that gets transferred here from somewhere else. Um, example, we have the planned sidewalks in here, we have money to upgrade the bunker in here as well as the final cost um on the fitness studio, that's what makes up that balance. Um, equipment, we tend to put money here off, you know, routinely so that we can buy equipment as we need it, we don't have to borrow every, for every piece of equipment we need. The proceeds from our sale to, on Purple Wave this year, I plan to transfer into this fund uh later this year. The two key funds on this page for you to consider is Fund Three Hundred, the capital improvements infrastructure. And over the years, money's been transferred into this fund, when, when we transfer money for a project and we spend it out of this fund and when we're done, the money for that project, if there's surplus, goes back to where it came from. And you're gonna see a um request to transfer some money back on some projects, but the unencumbered balance in this fund that could be spent is one point three million dollars. Um, it's, it's important to me when, that you understand that when there's one point three million in this fund, when you say something like we're going to approve two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of engineering for the stoplight at a hundred ninety-first street. We don't have any, we haven't funded the debt or anything, I would pay for that out of this fund. So those funds get used for projects that are appropriate for this fund un- until something else funds it. So if we do a stoplight and say we borrow money or something for that, I would reimburse the city, that's how this balance keeps getting replenished. So that's what those are. The excise tax has about one point six million, that comes to, um, that comes from the plating, final plating, they pay their excise tax uh when that gets done. We do have some debt that's paid by excise tax of about a hundred thousand dollars a year and it'll pay off um in twenty twenty-six. I would not, I don't have any suggestions on excise tax, I think that's more of a function of um, community development, because they generate those funds, that in those, that money should be spent towards development. You can define a lot of ways to spend money on development, including building a street or something like that. And then I also have water. And then I also have water highlighted because that's that balance. Eventually, you are going to have to make some decisions about when, probably in a. More than a year from now to do that. So that is the status of the funds. And again, I'll answer any questions that you would like on any of those funds, um but I wanted to be real clear on what what ones are really available.
How much do we have in the general fund reserve? Or how much will we have by the end of the year?
Um we should have about two.
Three point seven million. Oh, that that's that's current, sorry.
Yeah, at the end of the year, we should have about two point seven, two point six million. Our goal is about four million in the general fund.
And how much is in the benefits one?
Eight hundred thousand. We'd like to get that to, it's about one point one million in annual healthcare costs.
When you say goal, you mean that we wanna get to where we have an ending balance at the end of the budget year of four million?
Of half of the operating budget. And it is policy.
Yeah. And once we reach that point, obviously, as the budget grows, the reserve would need to grow too. Tips a little bit, then that could be additional revenue.
That's correct. You could, you would make decisions about where that funny money would be moved.
But wouldn't we include the benefit money towards the total budget? Cuz isn't the total budget include benefits?
But we don't spend the reserve on the payment of the.
No, I know. I'm just saying towards the reserve amount that you're looking to get to that four million, cuz that would put us at three point four.
Yeah, was, we could do that.
Cuz right now I feel like we're just hoarding money rather than, I think there's a healthy amount of savings you can have, but I think we're at a point now where we're kinda hoarding some of this where we could. Put it towards some of these projects that we're trying to do, rather than, is there an actual policy where we have to be half of the budget in reserves?
We do have a policy, a reserve fund policy, yes.
And what does it say?
Um we have been, I couldn't quote it to you, but we have been working on a policy of fifty percent of the operating budget.
What was that?
The general fund, I believe, was a six-month reserve.
Six months reserve, yeah. Right.
So I would say, wouldn't we consider the both part of that? If we, if we get to one point one on the benefits. It's like we're double dipping if we're trying to get to the half of the total for. I just feel like we're kinda, we're now we're at sixty percent in reserve rather than fifty.
Health reserve is only allocated just for the health.
But isn't that part of our total budget?
It is. The the.
So either we need to remove the benefits from our total budget when we're looking at reserves, or we need to include the reserve that's there. At this point, where if we get to four million in the general fund reserve, and we have one point one in our benefit, we'd be at five point one. So it's just like, that's a million bucks right there that we could be spending on.
Nickel Street?
Nickel Street or towards the stoplight or.
Possibly.
Cuz my thought is, we should take some of this excess funds and try to put it towards some of those projects so that we don't have to raise the mill levy so much this year. Um I feel like we're, like again, I feel like we're hoarding a little too much at some point.
I like that concept a lot. Um my biggest worry would be um our bond rating. Credit rating.
Well, that would be my question to him. I know he's here.
Actually, I'll be happy to tell you, the the next slide is, we've been on a strategy of conserving cash. Um because when, you know, two years ago, we were not doing that, and we were in a totally different financial position. And we have been upgraded in our bond rating, very primarily because we've been improving our cash position. And so we have a strategy, and we should stick with that strategy so that it doesn't negatively impact our bond rating. And I'm happy to let Ben um add to that. But as we, we are mitigating risk. By keeping cash on hand. So for example, you decide, no, you don't decide, we have some major blow up on a street. And actually, I'll give you an example. You wanted to do more work on Woodland Street, that it wasn't in good shape, and there was cash to do that, and so that's how we spent it. And so it helps us mitigate risk of, you know, the unknown by to having that cash on hand. Um the other thing is, when you jeopardize that bond rating, you're gonna pay it back in interest. Because our our interest rates will go up if our bond rating goes down. And so, in my opinion, I absolutely hear what you're saying, and I've been open about the balances and what they're for. But I feel like we will have a negative impact if we spend cash. On these projects when we'll be able to spend it in the future, on projects, when our cash is where it should be.
Ben, can you speak?
Yeah, do you wanna expand on that next? I'm sure we'll probably all have questions for you. Pick your brain.
Just on re- on really what, what type of decrease in reserves would cause the the bond rate to drop?
Yeah, and is there a certain amount that we could take out without affecting the bond rating?
Yeah, I've been asked that question a lot lately, not with you guys, but by several cities. I'm gonna give you an example of one that did happen here two years ago. Uh we had a a city council, you had a client with the city council that didn't believe in rate adjustments at all, I mean, at all. They wanted to spend the reserves down to where it was just barely in the minimum. Uh what ended happening is is sales tax went away. They dipped down to a negative fund balance, and immediately S and P dropped their rating. With a negative outlook for the future. And what they had said was, if you don't get this back up to a standard, their standard was thirty percent. Across the board, every fund you've got, except for utilities, that's gotta be six months. You don't do that, we're going down again. So their chore was conserve their cash. How are you gonna do that? They stopped spending everything. Streets, don't even spend money on streets, don't just forget about it, just to get that, keep that from 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 bottoming out. And we've represented Spring Hill for a long time. We sat through rating agency conversations eons ago that said, really? You've had three years of negative. Let's just say five hundred thousand. You can't add five hundred thousand to the fund balance. The the it's gone. Your rating is dropped. It's just not even a negative outlook. I don't know that there's a measure out there that says an analyst is gonna drop by a certain rating because of a percentage. It's more of the trend. So right now, because of the state of the economy, because of inflation, because of the surprises you find six feet down. On a on a rebuild, or even a uh infrastructure that's going up, and not have the cash to respond to it, becomes a negative impact. Uh analysts uh re- readjusted their percentages from weights on uh several things. They increased their weight on environmental and sustainability issues, which we all hear about, cy- cybersecurity and stuff like that. They also upgrade, they uh increased their uh their percentage of that rating on budget flexibility and liquidity. Right now, you guys have perfect budget flexibility and liquidity. You're balancing a high-growth city with cash that is available to not skip a beat if something happens. And because of that expansion, like Rhonda said, the risk, the risk you're mitigating is if you do. Dig even two or three feet down, and you come up with something that you didn't expect. Uh you've got six months more to get more money for that project, or you could tip in, dip into some of these reserves and hit it right away. A- and that's a risk. That that's also saying that to an analyst, this is, we've got enough money to ta- tackle that. We've also got a board that's willing to to really go to the mat and and cover the reserves. And and that's important to you guys. I know that's not a direct answer because I don't think there is one. It it really, it's more than just the financial aspect. It's gonna be management and how you guys. And I see cooperation all over with you guys and all the directors. Uh uh believe me, from what I've seen in the past. You got, you guys do a great job uh of managing this, and the information you get from Lane and and uh Rhonda is 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 great. Uh but your question's a valid one. I've seen negative, I've seen some that haven't moved at all. Uh lately, they've been negative. I mean, negative trends in in uh bond ratings. A decrease in, a decrease in one step could be anywhere from ten to twenty-five basis points. Uh so that'd be fairly sizable on a ten million dollar, you know, road, if you've got a large road going out, and you've got a lot of expansion ahead of you. That'll mean something uh to you guys. Um I'm not saying that you should decrease it, leave it alone, or increase it. Uh I know from what I've seen in the past for from the investment community, uh that cash stability. Uh not dipping into it, but not also overly, you know, adding to it. It it means something. Uh just that stability from year to year means a lot, and it, that's one of the reasons that you guys have such a high rating too.
No, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm like, I don't mind adding to it every year, but I think just hoarding everything that we do gain from the year. I think if we. Maybe plan on, okay, we wanna make sure it's at least this much this year, and if anything over that, we're gonna. Not just, oh, until we get to four, cuz that's gonna constantly move. Our budget's gonna constantly increase, and we're never gonna get to fifty.
One of the things that we've discussed um just this week, as we're talking about. Year-end carryovers and things is that as we go through each one of these, whether it's the water fund, as we transfer those out. Um coming up with, you you know, I think I've used the number seventy thirty. Uh seventy percent of it could go to, or I I don't think we go anything below fifty fifty. But some of those would go to the capital funds, and some of that would go to reserves. We're we're not trying to get to that res- six-month reserve this year. We're just trying to keep progressing towards that over the next two to three years. Um my fear would be is if we spend down too much of the reserves, over the next five-year period of time, our budget is going to go up. Um and and then that gap increases and just makes it exponentially tougher to get to that that goal that we're trying to get to. Um but yes, I would agree with you a hundred percent. It, we we should not be taking all hundred percent of that and putting it to reserves. But we do need to have a somewhere seventy thirty, sixty forty split, so that we can bring those reserves up and keep them moving up in the right direction.
Yeah, I say we fix a dollar amount. So what are we in last year on reserves? We're like one five, right, or one seven five?
The cash reserve in the general fund?
For, yeah, for the end of twenty three.
One million nine.
One point nine.
One point nine. So if we say, okay, what were we the year before that?
Uh, one point four.
And we were like seven fifty the first year that we.
Yes.
That was, I was, had the same kind of line of thought.
Yeah, we were less than.
You know, if we're one point nine this year, and we're projecting potentially two point three, two point four at the end of this year.
Two point six, I think.
We're looking at two to, two to three, maybe four years to hit that number. You know, if we can be patient with it. And 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 we've talked about too, that, you know, the next probably five years, from a mill levy perspective, are not gonna be great. But if we can be patient with it and not dwindle down our reserves, like we could hit that goal. And then it's a lot easier to keep up as it grows, instead of playing catch-up, like you guys are talking about.
And I think Rhonda and Ben put together some additional.
Yeah, we we have another section on that.
That also goes into uh the debt profile and looking out beyond five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, so maybe that's a good.
See, my thought is, I think thirty percent is a good number. Twenty-five to thirty is always a good number as far as reserves go. You get to fifty, it's like you're constantly chasing. And you never get to a point where you're gonna be where you wanna be. So if we say thirty and we say, okay, well, we're gonna max it to it. Whatever, two hundred and fifty grand a year, anything on top of two fifty that that we could put to the reserve, let's use that for projects. Because I think if we just keep doing this, we're gonna just keep raising the mill levy to try to get the fun, you know, get the reserves where they wanna be. As long as we're growing, I think we're still showing, you know, the the bond rating people that we're making progress. We don't have to. Do everything that we have towards it, in my opinion.
And I think what what they put together, we'll kind of paint the picture of. With, if there is a mill levy increase this year, that based on the known projects that we have. That it 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 it's a pretty good picture going out, um that there shouldn't be a need for any additional mill levy increases. Um now, short of the large projects, if we start doing interchanges along one sixty-nine highway. I mean, each one of those is a twenty million dollar project, probably with a five million dollar local match. Same thing with the the rail projects. Those are twenty-five million dollar to thirty million dollar projects. Probably a one to five million dollar local match. So outside of those unknowns. Um I I think they've put together a pretty good.
Pretty good story.
Couple s- slides here that I think will answer some of those questions. That addresses a pretty good policy and and uh projection for our debts and projects.
Okay.
There's also some thought process too of what your funding sources are and how frequently you get them. So like, we get sales tax every month. Property tax comes primarily twice a year in January or January and June, usually. Um um which is actually easier for the city because it's it's in sync with that. Um at at the rec, it, our fiscal year is July one, so we we have to have enough cash on July one. To carry us all the way through December, um because we don't have a lot of revenue that comes from other sources. So we stick to that fifty to sixty percent, which is more than what you probably average one is, but it's because of the liquidity.
The other thing too, that when you look at the funds, there are two um debt funds. One has, is the twenty twenty-three A, which we've done street projects and things out of, and we're holding about two point four million dollars in it. Those are absolutely earmarked. That is paying for Claire Road, um one six, I'm sorry, uh one hundred ninety-ninth to Claire Road. We haven't been billed by Johnson County for our share of that project, so that's sitting there. That's money already spent. There's also um money in that one as well for. Another project I'm blanking on at the moment, but there's another project, that two point four million is spent. There's. So I think about hoarding cash. Um sometimes you can't see in that balance that that money is already earmarked to go somewhere. No, I'm not, I'm not offended. I was like, wow, do I hoard cash? I've just stopped and think about that, so.
In my opinion, we're hoarding a little bit of cash, but that's just me looking at the financial statement. Um excise tax, what's kind of the minimum we wanna keep in there? Pat, do you have a a goal number that you wanna always have in there?
I'm sorry.
In excise tax? Is there a certain amount that we should always kind of keep in there, or can we kinda?
Just kept um seven hundred to a million dollars. But that, um the only thing that we have coming out of there, we have one bond payment, and I'm. I'm sorry, uh one bond payment that comes out of there. I believe it ends in two years.
Yeah, that's the one that ends in.
It's ends in twenty-six, yeah.
Six, okay. So really, uh the excise taxes, you know, we. We don't really need to keep it in there as long as we're on a good uh projection of uh C I P. And also projects. So we can always take the excise tax and basically after, and I don't like to use this terminology, but drain it. After uh we fin- complete this bonding, however, we, I have no idea how we were able to get a bond against a. Unknown, but we did.
A non-guaranteed tax.
Back years ago, you guys. So, but as soon as that's over, I would strongly suggest you never.
Ever.
Ever do that. And then, you know, it could go to literally zero.
Well, that's my thought, is take a million from that, and that can go towards, you know, the hundred ninety-ninth project or the hundred ninety-first project.
At least, at least five hundred thousand in there.
And then, same thing with the consolidated highway. Was there a minimum that we need to keep in there, or is that something we can throw like a million at the? The hundred ninety-ninth project?
I really oppose doing that, because that is the money for your street maintenance, the regular.
Oh, that's for maintenance, so.
That's what we use.
I really, just that.
Okay.
I like the idea of maybe trying to identify one line item that we could kind of push really hard as far as. Using the.
That's my thing. I'm like, we're, we got, we have two big projects in twenty-five.
Yeah.
That we need.
Trying to get there.
What uh Rhonda, what are funds four oh nine and four ten?
Um four oh nine and four ten? Tell me what they are.
It says go twenty twenty-three A.
That's the general obligation bonds. Those are the two that were taken out in twenty-three, and both of those funds are spent.
No, none of that's unencumbered.
None of that is unencumbered.
That's like three million right there.
And it's very well-defined where that money can be spent.
I like the idea of using, you know, if if we do end up merging, you know, the water system, I do like the idea of using that towards. You know, a project like one hundred ninety-ninth street or something like that. I think it's a good chunk.
Something that's a one-time hit.
Yeah, utilize, cuz that's a, that's a pretty big chunk that we could make a pretty good dent in that.
That would be a good one to utilize part of that for uh some of the sewer projects that we have coming up too, since it's a utility fund.
Since it's a utility.
Well, and excise could absolutely be a part of our overall strategy too, because we know that is driven by development. You know, so if we know what our development looks like and what that's projecting like, we know that that will replenish itself. Faster or quicker than perhaps some of these other ones. So like, that one's sounding like a pretty good idea at this point.
Well, in my mind, if if one hundred ninety-ninth is being done to help spur the development over there, we need to probably spend it towards that type of stuff.
Yeah, which excise would fit perfectly.
Go to the debt. I know you don't wanna talk about it till we talk.
No, I I have a, I have a lot more to say. He, um, we have, I'm gonna, I'd like to move on to the debt, but I wanted to say one really quick thing. There's a million dollars um in the excise fund, which is invested in CDs that are gaining five percent interest. Right now, and that's, it's, we've varied it over time, but it's about five percent all the time. And we would take that out of the bank and spend it to save four percent interest. And so that's something to think about too, is that we're making money on that money as opposed to reducing the four percent interest, so.
But we're also hitting, maybe saving a mil or a half a mil, and so that's where we have to look at. It's not necessarily for the city, it's for the residents.
I understand. So let's talk about debt. And I'm not skipping over this subject, so.
No, that's what I figured we need to go there.
It it all fits together really well, and I think it's a very, a great story to tell um related to. It, it all fits together really well. And I think it's a very, a great story to tell, um, related to the potential mill levy increase in the project. So we're talking about proposing a mill levy increase related to the project on one hundred ninety-ninth street. We're looking at an, an estimated cost of net to the city with cars funding and easements or, um, utility easements and all those things of about five million ninety-seven thousand, five point one million dollars. We would increase the mill levy roughly three point two five mils, um, for this, to fund this debt. And the mill levy would go to the debt fund, not to the general fund. So we cannot spend it on people or cars or something else. It would go into the debt fund to pay debt.
So it's going to be for projects and not operating?
That's right. That's right. It would be, it's a lower future burden. When you see the whole picture here, it's a lower, a lesser future burden to our current taxpayers to, to implement it now and let it grow over time with the same mill levy. Our, we're raising it now to allow not just for one hundred ninety-ninth, it'll be able to fund other projects in the future. Like, uh, two hundred and seventh street when it comes up, all of these things will work together. We have had the strategy from the beginning and we've talked to, many times to you about retiring and replacing debt. We would just don't want to keep adding debt. We want it to retire off some and replace it some so that we have an even expenditure for debt going on or close to it. Our valuation is increasing over time and I'm going to show you a ton of numbers, which I've tried to avoid doing, but we're going to talk about capturing that value in our future growth to fund projects. And then this will generate about thirteen million dollars to be allocated over forty years towards projects by raising the mill levy now and letting it grow with your community's growth, so. So there are some assumptions here. I don't have to read through all these, but we're looking at, um, actual assessed value for twenty-five, which we're working with. We're, we're starting out growth at eleven percent, which is average for our city, and then tapering it down to four percent, um, by twenty thirty-five, it tapers down, it doesn't just drop off. Um, we're looking at the three point two five mils. We would have some temporary notes, all the normal parts of our bonding process. And then we would, um, we're only looking at what's in the bond, the debt fund that we, that we levy for. So if it's a sewer bond over here or something like that, we're not talking about that. We're not talking about, um, special benefit districts and things like that. We're talking about levied debt. So this is what we're looking at in the next few years, which is the dark blue at the bottom is our current debt. Then you're looking at the debt for one hundred ninety-ninth, you're looking at the debt for one hundred ninety-first, and then eventually we'll be in the bright blue, which is the debt for two hundred and seventh street. This is our kind of ongoing plan and our CIP, so everything meshing together tonight. And then on this chart, what you see is the revenue that we will generate from that three point two five mils versus our current and new debt. And in the early years, of course, it's going to be a much thinner margin, um, between what we're levying and what we will pay out. And over time, as you can see, there are going to be some very thin years to that. But this mill levy, if we let it grow with our population, we will be leveraging the increase in our assessed value without going back to the tax fare. It will, it, we won't need to do that because it will fund what we need to in future years as our debt decreases in the way, place, we'll be able to fund the projects that we need.
What year does the RHID drop off? Because won't that be a big?
Nineteen, nineteen years.
I say, yeah, it was eighteen or nineteen years.
And it hasn't actually started yet.
So it hasn't even started yet?
The, actually, the nineteen years has started. We just haven't implemented it yet.
Okay.
Once it is approved, that's what you.
That's the day it starts. I knew we just hadn't been paying toward it, yeah.
So was that two years ago or one year ago?
Last year.
It'll be one year.
So that puts us at what?
Eighteen years.
Yeah, thirty, forty-two?
Forty-two, mm-hmm. And I'd be happy to share this entire forecast. We, um, forecasted out to, uh, twenty forty-five.
Now, if they meet their max before that, they pay it off, then.
Right, exactly.
Does, uh, does any of this account for abatements expiring?
That's what the RHID also, I don't know.
Like, I know seats is in the second half.
Because they only have.
We didn't.
They, they've got to have three or four years left.
Yeah.
We should have a big upcoming for that.
Gem Tech is on one, I believe.
Right.
They only have probably eight years left.
And it, yeah, that, we approved the first one of that, so it's only three years old maybe.
Oh, mid-am too. Yeah, they, they probably only have a couple of years left.
New one from two years ago.
Yeah, they have a new one.
But that was just to change over a name, I think.
No.
Yep.
Can't remember.
It was a, it was a new.
Oh, we did do a new one for them?
Yep. The other thing, those are account, we started, the base of that is our twenty twenty-five assessed value. And it is adjusted out for some of those because I have to track that, because I know it's going to come out when Johnson County gets our budget and things like that. So I have accounted for some of that, but not all of it, and not, not expiring.
So that could be a pleasant surprise and all this.
It would be a, a benefit to us.
Big business comes in.
Right.
That could make a difference.
Right. You, you, you know, you do your abatement for ten years, you put your time in, and then it's a big influx when it's, it's a long-term bet.
Right. So when you look at this, the, the line at the top is our revenue. It's how much we're generating on that three point two five mils. The line at the bottom is the difference between what we generate and what we spend out. So when you think about our CIP and the other things we want to do in the future, we'll be able to fund things like this from the debt service fund because our value's increasing over time. We've approved a mill levy, they stay together. And so this will give you that comfort, I guess, to say, we won't be back in two years asking for two hundred and seventh street. We won't be back in two years after that asking for the next one. This is how it's meant to be, that our city is growing, the assessed valuation is growing. The mill levy will grow in value in this debt service fund and allow us to fund other projects going forward in addition to one hundred ninety-ninth street.
I think my biggest concern is committing to long-term, even, I call ten-year long-term, uh, bond payments. When in my opinion, things are going to kind of fall off a bit, at least over the next couple of years. And so we're going to have valuations go down, so we're going to have to do another mill increase to offset that. So that's why I'd prefer to try to spend cash now, so that we're not as strapped if something goes bad in the housing market or in valuations. So that's where my biggest concern with just keep adding. I get, and all this is if things kind of stay the same, you know, over the next ten, fifteen years. And these are good projections, we just don't know. And in my line of work, we're just not, we're definitely going through an outreach program now where we're trying to find out who is not doing well. And there's a lot of people who are not business-wise, so. That's just my concern with, with continuing in the, you know, this bonding every year and saying, hey, we're just going to replace it. I'd rather have it fall off and then see what happens and then kind of go from there, rather than just planning on. I, I know we have to make a plan and I, that's why I like the CIP, but at the same time, I think we got to think about that a little bit too. And so that's where my whole thought is. Right now, we're at this pivotal point where we don't know what's going to happen over the next year or two. And then we'll know kind of in two years, I think, unless things keep limping along, whether it's going to be kind of right-sided or if it's going to be okay and just stay the way it is. So I think it's just a fundamental difference in thought process from where I'm at to where I think we want to be. It's just, I know personally, I'm doing the same thing where I'm like, all right, how do we get rid of? Although it's not, it's not making me much more, because I could make more probably in interest-bearing. I'd rather get rid of the debt just to try to be ready when things kind of hit the fan. So that's just where my opinion is, I know all this stuff is kind of, hey, we don't have to do it again because it's going to compound, but I think it could put us in kind of a rough spot too.
And I think, I, I fully agree if there's, if there's issues, but I think historically you can look within the, the metro area, there hasn't been really big downturns. But the, I think one of the issues when we go to spend down those reserves is not only the impact to our bond rating, but I, I think you just laid the case for it. If we spend down our cash right now, um, and then the, the economy downturns and there's a large defaults on, uh, people not paying their property taxes, or we have to have, uh, significant increases in benefits, then we don't, we don't have that financial security to draw on reserves. And that's, that is the main reason to have those.
Well, I'm not talking about drawing down the reserves to nothing. I mean, I, I would say you're always at least a quarter to thirty percent, but that's going to definitely be plenty if things happen. I'm talking about money coming in to meet the obligations when you keep adding the bonding that we keep adding.
Correct, but the, the way this is set up is that if you draw it down to twenty or thirty percent reserve, that's not sufficient in this day and age. The, the, there's a two-month or three-month reserve is, that is a bare minimum. And I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I think in this day and age, there's so much fluctuations, um, with costs that are, uh, whether it's within the construction industry or just something that pops up, really that four to six month is a minimum anymore.
Well, thirty percent is four months. So that's, I mean, so I'm saying stay there. And I'm fine with it keep, with including growing. I'm just saying, throwing everything at that is not what, that's why I'm talking about pulling from these other funds.
I would say.
Is why I think it's important.
The issue is you're not going to accomplish both. You, you're not going to be able to draw down and do the project.
I think we also need to slow, I think we have probably too many projects at some point. We probably need to slow down some of the big projects too.
And, and that's, well, that's a different discussion. So I think, I think that's maybe a key discussion that we need to have is what does the governing body want? And if, if we do want to continue the growth, then we need to look at a plan that is financially stable for long-term growth. And if the goal of the governing body in the community is to stifle the growth or slow it down, then that's a different discussion. But up until this point, the discussion has been that we wanted to grow the community and, and put them on a financially stable platform and do that. So I think if that's the discussion, then we probably need to shift to that and say, let's tap the brakes, slow things down, uh, knowing that it, it could be a self-fulfilling prophecy is when you slam those brakes on, developers will leave. And then we've created our own issues with, with revenue streams coming.
I was just going to say, then you halt, halt the biggest portion of your revenue streams coming in.
Well, I'm not, and I'm not saying growth, you know, I think annexing everything, you know, you know, east side of the Mississippi is probably not the right idea and, and giving away things for free just to get them in. But I think natural growth is fine. I think we want to promote that, but going out of our way to give things away so that people annex sense that we can try to get the growth there, I'm not for that. And that's where I think, I feel like we're going, because we're trying so hard to gobble up some of the areas around us rather than letting it happen naturally through our normal growth. So that's just where I think the two kind of things collide. But, and I may be the only one up here, and that's fine. That's the case, but.
I think there's some, some other factors in that strategy too. It doesn't pertain to budget or finance or anything, so I, I don't know that we need to get into it tonight, but I, I don't. When we have those types of situations, I don't think we're doing that purely for growth. Like, we're not trying to grow just to grow. We're trying to grow so that we can have more money, to get more revenue, to do whatever we need to do. I think there's a more geographic strategy to that as well.
No, I think there's a little bit.
Are you talking about like growing what we have?
Yeah, like, grow what we have. I mean, I guess, Pat, do you know what all we have coming up? That's, I know we have a lot of stuff that's kind of approved, but do we have, are people still coming to us wanting to do as much as they were before?
Right. We still have, uh, good potential coming up with, um, a couple other large developments that we're working on right now. So the outlook for the next few years looks good. Uh, if we can get them online, um, obviously we have a, a big thing coming to council next, um, meeting. But other than that, we do have a couple of, uh, good developments that are coming online that are right adjacent to our community. Sewer is already at one of them. Uh, one of them, there might be, I don't know, like a million, million and a half dollars that has to be spent after it started, a few years down the way because of capacity. But other than that, it, you know, we're, we're looking like we're going to be good for the, if we can get these through the next five years or so. And then, then we'll just, you know, that's what community development is. We don't look at today or tomorrow or even this year. This year's done.
Yeah.
With us. Uh, next year's actually getting pretty close to being done with us as far as planning wise, you know. We're looking five to ten years on trying to get subdivisions set up that are large enough that will support a five, seven-year plan usually is what they are.
So I have a question in that, because one of the things I keep hearing is, are we going to get more restaurants? Are we going to get more business? So when you talk about developments coming in, that's one thing.
Right.
Um, but, I mean, that's kind of where I'm trying to figure out and when citizens talk to me about that, like, where are we at with getting more restaurants? And, and what, what is it, aside from like what you were saying of not giving the free stuff or whatever to people coming in, but, um, what is it that attracts commercial businesses here? What is it that spring hill? Because people are like, I don't understand, why can't McDonald's just come here? I mean, I just think a lot of people don't know. And it's like, are we doing something as a city to create a barrier?
No, not create a barrier. Yes, we're trying to do something to get them in. Most everything is, is on rooftop.
Rooftops, yeah.
You know, and unfortunately, and maybe fortunately for us, is, uh, fifteen minutes away, you have everything you want. Uh, most everybody works fifteen minutes to the north. We have an awful lot of interest in restaurants, um, and some other retailers. We're just not quite there. And then also, uh, truth of matter is the, we have to somewhere or another solve our problems on entering a hundred, uh, one sixty-nine highway. You know, uh, business does not want to take the chance. I just spoke with a very large chain not very long ago. You know, they looked down at the two twenty-third area, it just wasn't correct for them. But they will not look at anywhere to the north until there's some controlled access. Because they know, and it's just like, we're the same way. If it's hard to get in somewhere or you're going to endanger your children or yourself, uh, you're just not going there. And that, so that is one of the deals that we're working.
And the big ones, they, I mean, they're looking at fifty, a hundred locations, you know, and Spring Hill might be one of those. You know, so they got a massive list of options. So if there's one little defect with one, it's easy for them to toss it out.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I've got, actually, I've got to leave for a meeting, so. And I think staff's doing a really good job of, of trying to get those. Um, I've spoke to numerous individuals, uh, one, uh, one of his family members owns a couple Chick-fil-A's. And, and it really does come down to population base and how many people, and I think Chad mentioned that he's friends with, uh, individual that owns a restaurant. Where we have so many people leave town during the day, that's something they look at. You know, they want to have people for lunch, dinner, uh, to make it work. It's, it's one of those things that somewhere, and it, and it's, it's not necessarily a magic number. Uh, because if you looked at just median household income, we're a perfect place for these restaurants to come because we have a higher median household income than a lot of places throughout the state. Somewhere between that ten to fifteen, to fifteen to twenty range is really where you'll start seeing some of the larger chains come in. I think, you know, now that we're close to ten, I think some of the big chains will start looking. But Pat hit it on the head. There's a couple of things that we have to address on access.
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 Because they, they want to be off the highway.
One hundred ninety-ninth with that big development that, uh, potentially is going to go in there. East-west accessibility between one sixty-nine and sixty-nine highway is, that's going to be crucial for us over the next twenty years. Is where are our major corridors, both east and west and north and south?
I think we get stoplights in at one hundred ninety-first, one hundred eighty-third, and maybe even some of those other areas. I think that'll really spur development in those areas because it'll be a lot safer intersection. That'll be potential to.
Well, just the talk of one hundred eighty-third where, uh, the Travel Plaza, I call it Chuck Stop, there's Travel Plaza. Uh, you know, we already have interest there. But they're not going to pull the trigger and, and Mr. Pill is correct. They're not going to buy a piece and sit on it for a year when you can go right over to Gardner and Gardner Road and Taco Bell and start a permit within three, three to four weeks, you know, because it's already plotted and ready to roll. So I think that you'll, you will see that, um, very quickly with some controlled access. And we have good numbers, guys, with our housing.
Yeah.
And coming up, we, it looks like we have good numbers for a while.
You know, one of the things, and I hope I'm not.
Get crazy.
Speaking out of term, you know, we, we do see a lot of developers come in. And, and Mayor and I were speaking this morning and it's, sometimes it's. Sometimes it's hard to get that to translate into an actual breaking ground. You know, it's not just six months, you know, Pat's working on some of these deals for years. You know, there's there's been a couple of them that since I've been here, we've been waiting two years to see them break ground and they still haven't done anything.
Took us two and a half years for QuickTrip.
And they, you know, projects and developments, they shift, they change, they have a whole bunch of different variables. Some of them look like they're a hundred percent done deal and they can turn a complete one eighty on on different things, so.
And that's, you know, if I come across, I'm I'm trying to be passionate here on this is that. Not argumentative, it by any means, it's more that these projects, we'll take the railroad, those crossings. That's probably when you look at it, a ten year plus project. And when we defer some of these. Projects or or mechanisms to put the city in the in the proper. Risk adverse area that we need to be financially. That in my mind, it it we're kicking the can down the road, maybe it's not a bad thing to do that. But in order to address some of these projects, we know if we kick it a year or two down the road. We just know that it's going to be another two or three years before we can get that project. To where there's a house up or where there's a a restaurant or where there's a grocery store.
Where it's generating revenue versus.
It's not just that two years, it's it's now we're three to five or six years out and. That's what is difficult. We were dealing with a developer the other day and, you know, one of the one of the drawbacks was getting energy. And some of the 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 transformers that they needed are almost five years out. So I mean, we're we're talking on some of these projects where we wouldn't even see the benefit of that project for probably seven years. So we have to be able to plan on that five to ten year timeline and a two or three year. Hold makes it difficult to do that when we're talking to some developers.
And going back to what we were talking about, like the benefits, like, I mean, I think QuickTrip is a prime example of something that came in and it's benefited the whole community greatly and just. Um the amount of revenue that it's brought in, the amount of service that it provides to everybody and something like, you know, like a restaurant, something else, I think. You know, once you have the stoplights, the area intersection, everything, it really makes it successful and I think if we can mimic that, you know, a hundred ninety first street, a hundred eighty third street. Think we can start bringing that development in and really benefit the community a lot and and also generate tax revenue at the same time.
I just think we need to message that better because, you know, I don't think people understand that, the layperson before I set up here. I didn't know, yeah, I'd like to have more restaurants, I just don't think people, you know, they just kind of immediate gratification, like I want it. And so I just, I mean, that's why I think people talk about a lot and they're like, what the heck's going on here? Like, we we are getting all these houses here and then there's no business or restaurants and what's going on and. So I just think we need to message better um to people and I know they have an opportunity to get on here and watch these meetings and watch city council and the planning commission and all that, but. I just think we could do better messaging, including us up here and what we say to citizens when they approach us with that.
Yeah, I can't tell you how many times, excuse me, to that point, I can't tell you how many times I've heard a citizen say, why doesn't the city let, you know, McDonald's? Why doesn't the city let a Taco Bell come, you know, why why aren't they letting restaurants come to town, you know, why why aren't they letting stores come?
Yeah, but I think that's messaging. And I think it always has to be consistent, especially in a community that everybody's saying the same thing or it just creates a lot of confusion and a lot of negative. Feelings and all that stuff.
Well, in fact, it's the exact opposite, we're doing our best to bring anybody that wants to come, you know, as far as benefits to the city into town, yeah. As far as benefits to the city, not anybody.
Another thing I want to point out when you talk about spending cash is when you look at the CIP, it's a good night to have all these pieces together. And you'll see I put on there, you know, when I look for a funding source, I'll say pay cash for this, pay cash for that, pay cash. Because if you just take the cars project and you know there are two big high dollar ones on there, it's kind of a. High dollar year, low dollar year, high dollar year kind of a thing and the other three years are low dollars and their. Maximum might be three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty five thousand. That's where I would spend your cash is to say. We're we know we're going to have nine hundred thousand dollars worth of projects in between those big ones. That will just pay the write the check and that's what that fund, that's what that cash to me should be used for. As opposed to if we pull the million out, we pay down on a hundred ninety ninth street. We're still going to have to come up with the money for those projects and some of our resources are gone. And so that's why I I think when you look at it, yes, it's a big chunk. But there are a lot of little places for it to be spent or again, that's Nichols and Hale, one one of those streets. Um for that million dollar price tag, so I just think it's important to look at that whole picture. Um when we think about all these steps that we need to take and also when you think out future years. Because we're and we're doing it right now, I think one, you're eliminating some of the stress, if you do it now and you get the mill levy placed and you start generating the the. The re revenue for debt. You won't have to fret this every single time, we won't be up here saying, oh, raise the mill, we won't be doing that. We'll be looking at our debt fund and spending it as the council sees fit and then you would have. Um you would have the chance to one decide, we're not going to build that street like like we've done with a hundred ninety ninth, you didn't. You certainly didn't take that on the first request. You we've worked through things for two years on that project and you will always have that opportunity to say, I don't want any more debt, I want to do something different. And when the future, when we're in those future years, you would be able to do that, it's always in the council's. Control, it's not a done deal, if you will, and for future debt.
I would like to strategically look at some of these larger funds though and even if we're taking, you know, five hundred thousand dollars here, three hundred thousand dollars here, you know. Five or six of the funds where we can and come up with a decent chunk to where we can knock that. Yeah, not not knock the mill levy down lower, knock, you know, make where that hits a whole lot.
That's yeah.
Less of a jump because I'm just, I mean. That that's a that's a big jump to everyone and I think we could, you know, yeah, I don't agree that we should take all these down to zero, but I think we could take some big chunks out of some of these and at least make that.
We can, but we will not be able to do the projects that are slated coming up in the same timeline. That'll be, we'll we'll spin down our reserves and then we'll have to come back to the governing body. And when we bond that, then we're going to have less on our reserves, so when they do the bond rating. That'll, it may not knock us down more than a tenth or a quarter, um but that will be potentially an issue.
And I'm not saying just reserves or even reserves at all, I'm saying that some of the other, some of the other funds and maybe, you know, maybe a half a million out of reserves or something, you know, a chunk to where. It wouldn't affect our rating mon- much if at all, but yet we could still knock that amount down to a more manageable amount.
One of the things that we really haven't discussed much is that internally at the staff level, we've really tried to. Not add staff unless it was absolutely necessary. And and part of the savings that we see at the end of the year is because of those, we don't, we don't have those expenditures. Um as the community continues to grow and the population, you know, we're close to ten thousand now, uh and we. Based on some of the numbers we've looked at, probably by twenty thirty, we're going to be somewhere twelve thousand plus. As as that happens, we know we're going to have to have additional staff, whether it's with PD is probably the obvious place. Uh public works is another area. Internally here at City Hall, we have purposely tried to not fill those positions. Or add additional because we know there's so many competing interests, whether it's in community development, um needing a planner or inspectors or. Uh multiple different positions, so we're we're trying to artificially keep those low. Um though there will come a point in the next five years that we have to have additional staff. Just to be able to get the things done in public works. You know, we're we're talking about a new sewer plant, we really haven't touched on that tonight, that is going to be a a very big project. And it's something that's uh will be coming back to the governing body for initial discussions later this year. And you guys will have a really big decision to make and it's a it's. We know that, you know, probably by twenty thirty, we're going to be at near a hundred percent capacity of our plant. Even if we don't do anything right now, we're we we have to do something with the plant in the next five years. So there there's a lot of things out there that we have to discuss and that could create staff. A new plant that size is going to generate a couple of staff, now granted, that's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming from a different source. Um but there's there's a lot of variables in this and, you know, it's, we spend a lot of hours, I I I bug Rhonda endlessly and and Ben and.
I'm going to get a cop from my office.
And 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 we we put a lot of thought into this on trying to make. This over the next five to twenty years, a sustainable organization for growth. Or or no growth, wherever that is, we'll do what the governing body wants us to do. But if if sustainable thoughtful growth is what the governing body and the community wants. We want to pu- put forward the best option um to be able to do that and. If if the governing body says two mills, we'll go two mills, we'll we'll make it work, um we'll we'll readjust those those roads. But if we want to to hit the marks that we're looking at over the next five years for our projects of two hundred seventh, hundred ninety first, a hundred ninety ninth. This is the best option without putting us at a more of financial risk. But we can make other options work too, so.
Can I ask you this question, um I know that Spring Hill was the. The what, the first lar- the most largest growth. So what who was number two?
Ooh, I looked this up too.
When it came out, I saw that.
The reason, the reason why I ask is I always like to. And again, I'm kind of new up here, but I always kind of like to see what other places have done and how they've grown. Just to get an idea like, okay, and see where their city's at, to see just just something to compare it with a little bit, not that we have to do it the same way. But I mean, right now, we're, you know, trying to project and do all this and I would like, you know, some examples of some other cities just to make sure. If we're going to do some of this stuff, I want to see how it worked for them, what mistakes, I mean, I don't know, I I just.
I think I have the list in my office.
I'm just kind of curious because I I know.
I think, I I don't know who it was last year, I know for a few years it was like Goddard, uh which is a suburb of Wichita. They were up there and then I think it was maybe another metro community here and then there was. Maybe one on the the Missouri side that was.
Do you see what I'm saying though? I mean, to me, like, as there's been other cities that have grown like ours and I always kind of like to look and see. You know, and I understand we're in a different county and and the 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 money's different and all that, I I appreciate that, but. I just want to, I mean, so all we have is you guys coming to us with all these things and sometimes you have options, sometimes you don't. And I kind of like to see, okay, well, what's worked in this area for a given city with growth and all that, because I'm for growth, but. I just want it to be, I want it to make sense and that we're doing it not too fast, but also. You know, doing it mindfully and strategically and.
I think there's some very good examples of that, you know, when you look back over the, and and I'm I'm a western Kansas, central Kansas boy, so I. You know, I have to listen to what other people say up here, but if you look back just on Ames, uh Pat had a a good presentation of what. I think he gave it to the planning commission of what an intersection looked like over about a five year period of time. A two year period of time, so if if you go, you know, you talk to some people who lived there their whole lives, ninety fifth street used to be or somewhere up in that area. Used to be kind of the southern end and then it then it was a hundred nineteenth and then a hundred and thirty fifth and, you know, now it's down. Below a hundred and fifty whatever street and a hundred sixty seventh. It, you you can see that growth and and what has worked for those other communities like Overland Park, uh Lenexa. Uh but yeah, we can definitely look at those.
Well, and like what was their, what did their mill levy look like, did they go into their reserves, like, you know, I'm just kind of curious to know, like. Is what we're asking for appear to keep our mill levy a little lower, is that crazy or, you know, I mean, is there? I just kind of like to see some of that.
We could definitely.
Like Maze and Baser, I think.
I have, I have the list according to um the Star. So um Lawrence, Gardner, Ray Moore, Spring Hill, Parkville, Baser and Peculiar.
Yeah, so I mean, again, it's not like I had to have, I'm just like, you know, like.
What did they do that was good, what was they do that was bad?
Yeah, it'd be nice to kind of.
Well, we have a Parkville person right here on staff now, so we can pick her.
So the Parkville do it right or they do it wrong?
Right.
And I don't know if it's unique to, but one of the things that we struggled with when we came here is. Not only are we trying to deal with growth, which we were trying to, we had maintenance issues that had been deferred. We had uh reserve levels that weren't correct.
Riding the ship.
We're we're, this giant ship, we're trying to turn it in the right direction. And, you know, in a two year period of time, I think we've done a pretty good job of that. Um it's just now, I'll throw it back on the governing body is what direction, now that we've kind of turned the ship headed north, you know. What direction, are we going first gear, second gear, you know, are we are we still headed north or do we need to kind of drop anchor for a little?
Well, and a lot of what we have in those decisions is based off what you tell us, what the what the what the staff tell us and so. I mean, I guess, I don't know, I like to make like evidence based decisions sometimes on looking at, you know.
I mean, yeah, my my um thought process is, we probably need to talk to Pat, so if Pat says, hey, the reason that we're. Having issues getting the things that people are asking for is the highway needs to be adjusted, need to get, you know, correct, so let's do that. Rather than focus on the taking over a bunch of new areas or whatever or, you know, doing whatever it is we're trying to do, right, so. Do we say, okay, well, we're we're now ju- affecting a hundred ninety first, so that's great. Do we look at the rest of those and say, well, now they're only right hand turns onto the highway, no more, you know, what can we do there to kind of. Alleviate some of the other issues from the cross traffic in other areas. That was, that's more of the stuff that I'm worried about because then we start fixing that, then we can worry about going further out. But that's kind of where my thought is like, we need to probably address a lot of things in the city rather than worrying about more about the growth in the areas that we're not already in.
And 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 that's probably where we have a philosophical difference. Is that, and I think I even said this in my interview. I think I did, maybe I didn't, it's been a while back, it is really. And in my defense, it was really late night. It was a late evening.
Probably past midnight.
It was, but you know, and and that's one of the tough things that we have to do as a city is, I I gave the analogy, which is probably a horrible analogy. But it's like a bicycle rim and and don't don't quote me on this, but there's, say there's fifty fifty spokes on that rim. Uh we don't have the luxury of just picking one spoke and focusing on that. We have to look at every spoke on there and trying to figure out how that all ties together. Whether it's for the growth of the school district, whether it's for the growth of our people, um whether it's for the transportation, the the safe and efficient. Uh movements of vehicles, uh water sewer, all of those tie together when we're looking at this. So even if we do a hundred and sixty nine, we deal with those issues, which we are dealing with them, um we deal with KDOT. On a, sometimes a daily basis, sometimes it's every month. We deal with BNSF, we're we're dealing with all of these agencies, um with Mark, with Johnson County on a on a monthly basis. Uh with Miami County, we have to as a staff focus on every single one of those. And they all tie together, the Bucyrus uh Sewer Main Project. That is an opportunity that, you know, was brought to us in order to take care of a KDHE concern for Miami County. But with that project that's coming online, that opens up an eastward mobility for us along two hundred twenty third street and and within that whole sewer basin. So e- even if we're focusing on one sixty nine, we still have to know what the, what our opportunities and our risks are going east. Because that's, we we know what Johnson County is doing, we we know it's growing, we know it's going to come down to us, it's either we're going to grow a little bit. I don't know how far that is, if it's if it's a a mile or two. We have to know what those are so that we can present that information to you as a governing body, so you guys can make informed decisions. But I don't know that we can say we can only focus on one or two items because they're all inter- intertwined, so putting. Putting uh an example up on a hundred ninety first or a hundred eighty third street, if we put signalization there. Then that makes that area a lot more uh a positive growth area, which we need to address sewer. We need to address uh police, uh need to have that ability to go up there, that that means we need to start looking at Woodland Road. For transportation north, south. So there's a lot of variables that go into that that we have to sit down and look at with now Allison and um other. Specialty engineers that do traffic studies and and try to tie all that together, so it's. I would love it if we could focus on one or two things, but everything we do is so intertwined with everything else, we have to look at all fifty spokes.
Well, and even if we're not focusing on it, the communities around us are. And so if, you know, if we decide not to go this way or north or whatever, the other communities are going to and so. They're going to close in on us if we don't.
I I I think you need a separate perimeter, but I don't know how crazy. I I I think you need a separate perimeter, but I don't know how crazy we need to go, but at the same time. I think we can as a, as a governing body say, hey, we want to really focus on this, so tell us what else is affected by this. Thing that we're most, is most important to us and the people. You have to remember too, that we also have the liability to go out and say. We're not just going to keep increasing your taxes to just do everything to, for everyone all the time, so. There is some things we have to say no to, there's things that we have, so. I I think there's a lot of that push and pull, I know. Just jumping it up to what you want to jump it up to is going to help over a five, twenty year period, but it's also going to kill a lot of people in town that are like. Well, sh- now I can't pay because it, I can't afford it, like, you know, so it's just, we gotta, there's a balancing act, just like you have a balancing act to figure out. How everything intertwines, we have to have a balancing act of what's right for the actual residents that are already here and have been here for a long time.
I I think back to your question, um, about other communities on the mill levy going up and down. Um, I was talking to a, one of the staff members with Alatha who'd been there for over thirty years, and I asked that exact question. And there was a point, um, I call it an X. When, when the growth of the community has gotten to a point where the revenues will start. Meeting or exceeding any of the future growth expenditures. Um, and typically at that point, and tha- and that's an unknown for us, I I'll say it's fifteen to twenty years.
That's a while.
Y- y- you're going to hit that point to where that mill levy can start dropping, and that's what I think Alatha, and I, I've asked her to send it to me, so I haven't actually seen it. Um, but I think that's what you'll start seeing, and that's one of the reasons that Overland Park has one of the lowest mill levies in the state of Kansas. Is because they've seen that growth and they're able to to keep that mill levy relative.
And they also have the most sales tax, the most. Everything else, it's most commercial, the most everything else.
We've got really good examples of what has worked. In in not only the metro, in the state of Kansas and probably the nation, in the communities to our north. They have done a really good job of controlled growth, not, not everywhere, but you, the majority of what they've done is that. In order to have a fourteen mill levy, I can guarantee you, you ask anybody in the state of Kansas, any city. Except for maybe one that the mayor pointed out that was at zero, they would, th- they wouldn't want it. But almost any city in the state of Kansas would die to have a fourteen mil or a twenty mil or twenty six mil levy.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time this morning, Wayne and I, just looking at mill levies just of the entire state of Kansas in the metro area and stuff.
Not, not that that means we have to go up. I'm just saying that we have some really good examples of what has worked and worked well to our north that we can draw upon.
And just for an example, going back to, you know, being the fastest growing city, so. We, in the last five years, Spring Hill's grown thirty nine point fifty nine percent, so almost forty percent in the last five years. The next closest city in the entire Kansas City Metro area grew twenty six percent, so, and that was Parkville. So, so, um, that's, that's how significant Spring Hill has grown compared to even the other fastest growing cities.
During that time, we've had about a, a three or three and a half mil, I, I don't know the exact number, but it's roughly around three plus mil.
Decrease, yeah, it went from twenty s- the high was twenty six point two two maybe or something, twenty six point something, or maybe even twenty seven, twenty six or twenty seven.
So I'm going to pick on Ben, who's been sitting back here quietly, are you brave enough to come wait in here now? Do you have anything that you would want to add to the conversation?
I actually started my career in Wyandotte County. Seven years after that, I went to Alathas, I kind of saw that crossover, I think, I know who you're talking about, but he's right. There was a point where they needed to add revenue or add mill levy for revenue, they didn't have the sales tax Overland Park did. Uh, and they made some, uh, critical decisions in infrastructure, and it was on the highway. Because their issues were replacing a, a waterslide that was thirty years old and closed with graffiti. With a Home Depot, um, and a whole, what we call the football. Um, the whole center, retail center, put a tiff over it and then everything else exploded. But what they did was change that Hundred Nineteenth Street corridor, and and so it was safer. When that retail came in, that's when that crossover happened, and sales starts, sales tax started booming. So they can start lowering the levy or rely on sales tax more, they're in the point now that they're growing even faster. So they had to have a sales tax just for transportation to get everything that they built thirty years ago cleaned up, which they finally got my street done. Because they live right north of here, uh, but. That, that was one of their growing pains, is how do you, how do you do this? They di- they didn't want to, they didn't want to put mills out there, which I understand that, i- it was done to them. People didn't want to live in Overland Park, they just didn't want to go too far, so they move across the city line and then they plump down there, so. The, the city council just had to, they had to react to that. Instead of taking the bull by the horns and actually showing where they can be living and making sense for the city. They had to react to what was done to them, they eventually got that, and that's when the big boxes came in. When they were baiting a lot of stuff all over the city and the mayor goes, no, 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 we got to be strategic about this, where are they going to go? I mean, you've got Wiswell Farms up here, it's going to be a fantastic, uh, uh, neighborhood. A- and for that matter, talking to Ronde, it wasn't just, I mean, it's time to start looking at your benefit districts. And seeing when is enough enough, because you got people knocking your doors down, I mean, I talked to people at Alatha. Or in, well, we represent Topeka now too, and they said, oh, yeah, started in Spring Hill, how are they doing? You gotta go look at them again, because their house is better than the one you live in, so you go look at them again, so we see this, uh, i- i- this is very familiar. What you're going through, but it starts with, it's, it does start with capital, that's the fastest growing expense you're going to have, yeah.
Thank you.
So, um. I've been sitting here listening and thinking, okay, how do I turn, what action do I take, you know, what, what, what's the? I'm, because obviously our goal here.
Gone down a few rabbit trails.
Yeah, exactly, and I like rabbit trails, but. We're, we're building to September twenty second for you to approve a CIP and to approve a, a budget. And this might be a little risky thing, so I'm not sure, I feel like you kind of have a consensus. Um, I've, I've, what I took away from the conversation tonight is. You're looking for an alternative to the three point two five mills. Is that, am I, did I he- hear you correctly?
For me, yes.
For me.
I would, I would like to see where we can pull some, strategically pull some chunks and bring that down.
Okay, um. With, I also heard a comment that you thought maybe, I think Chad, you said that maybe we need to pull back on some projects. Are there projects in the CIP you feel are not the focus of the city? I'm not pointing at you, I'm saying to the group of you.
Just said my name.
Since Chad brought it up. Said you don't have to be the only one to answer that, is my point, is that if we're not working on the right projects, then we should adjust the CIP to reflect that.
I mean, I think the two projects in twenty five are, are good projects, that's what we need to, you know, those two are going to be good. Do I think we should probably pay cash for some of it? I think we should. Going forward, yeah, I I think at this point, we try to find stuff that we can pay with, like the smaller ones that we can pay in cash to get some things going and done. Rather than keep having bond projects that happen, uh, I know sewers, to me, another big important one. Um, do I think we need to go the hugest route? Probably not in my opinion, would I rather try to maybe? I don't know, I know there's ways, a couple of years ago, we talked about, um, the retention areas that we can pull from and try to expand some of the. Um, what it can handle, what we currently have, just to see what happens over the next years, because. I'd like to see what developments do continue to come in, because I do think that we might have some pullback on some of these developments that. Maybe have plotted already and they just don't move forward, so, um, you know, I, I do think the. The Justice Center or whatever is probably not feasible in the next five to ten years. Um, or whatever we called it, municipal complex, whatever, um. But stuff like that, I mean, I, I would like to focus on the. Well, we need to focus on the highway either way, whether it's through money or through just kind of cleaning it up. But, uh, I think that's going to help spur some of that commercial development she talked about, and then like Lane said, we need to figure out how that's going to affect the rest of the stuff. And, um, and then go from there, rather than say, okay, well, we need to do this or do that, I think we need to start somewhere. And say, this is probably our main focus as a governing body, and then from there, how's that affect everything else that the city has to look at? Instead of, I feel like we're kind of playing a little bit of everything right now, so. I'd have to go sit through every single project and say, I don't think this is going to happen. Again, I always look at the CIP as a wish list anyway, it's kind of like a Christmas wish list, where it's like, you may get like. Two out of this ten things, you know, but, um.
And it, it's definitely an evolution that this, today I can put this, you know, this list together and it looks like this. And, you know, some of them slide out, like in railroad crossings is a great example, that's, that's probably a ten, fifteen year project. And we're keeping it moving along in the next five and then we'll see where it goes from there, so. We just pick a piece of time and it, and it moves. Um, as opposed to say, well, we're simply not doing railroads, just to scratch that off. That's really not realistic to say, okay, let's go all the way down the, the rabbit hole, if you will, and then if that doesn't work out, it doesn't work out.
Well, and I think what you're looking for, correct me if I'm wrong, is like, is there anything on the CIP that you're like, we absolutely should not be doing?
Right, I'm not going to, I don't want you working on that.
I think we're all in a consensus of, we understand the financial challenges and where the mill levy needs to go. For us to complete the projects that we prioritize, I think we all also agree that. We want to make that impact as small as we possibly can, and. We talked a lot of, tonight about using reserves to try and lower that impact. Um, we all have different comfort levels of what that should be, I think. I'm a little bit more with the staff on, on the reserve side of things. Um, Mr. Young is a little more willing to spend some of that, so. I, I don't think we're as far apart as, as it may sound like we are, um. Uh, I think we just want to be very nuanced in whatever the mill levy ends up being. Assuming that it's going to be a bigger number than it is right now, we want that to be as small of an increase as we can make it, but. I know my priority is also, you know, looking at the CIP and seeing, we know there's a big Two Hundred Seventh project in a couple of years down the road. I absolutely do not want to be having mill levy conversation when we get to that point. So whatever we do this year, I don't want to come back to it. And that's been, I've talked with Lane about that a lot, and that's, that's really my number one priority, is we need to set this. And then we're not going to talk about the mill levy going up for a while after that.
What was that old commercial, set it and forget it?
I almost said that, but I thought it was too corny.
Just, just because I like a, a target to loo- look at, um, I'm going to drill down one more question. I- is there a number, like a million, million and a half? Um, c- because I think within that excise tax and some other things, millions probably easy, million and a half is going to be a little tougher. But I mean, if you're thinking.
Yeah, I think the stoplight we should try to pay cash for, because what is that, million and a half?
That's a three or four million.
Yeah, that's a.
Oh, I thought you were saying it was a million and a half or?
No, that's, that's a, probably in the three million dollar range.
It's in the CIP at three million.
So is it two mills towards the regular operating budget then?
Uh, yes.
I mean, so maybe we could get to a million of that in cash.
That's what I was hoping, I mean, yeah. Well, if we have a, a number we can go through here, look at this, we can work with Ben to go through and redo those projections that, that we had. Um, a- and then we can back into, you know, whether, whether it's three point two five or whether it's two point eight, we can come back with that number.
Exactly, that's exactly where I'm thinking.
If, if it's, you, I'm glad you said that, because if it's like three million, that's going to be a, a big, that's going to be.
A big number, yeah.
That's a big number, but a million, million and a half, we maybe.
I think it'd be, I think we could shoot for a million and a half was my, the number in my head.
I, I would, I would be in favor of pushing that as hard as we can. But also not damaging our bond rating, not damaging our credit.
And I think, I think if we did set that, let's just say we set it at a million and a half target rate, I think we could come up with that without. Without hammering the reserve, without hammering the reserve and affecting our bond rating.
So let's work with Ben and you, and, and we can get that number back before the, the next time we bring this back to you.
Any other questions, comments? Sound like a plan of action anyways?
So thinking, um, process here, um, I, if you have adjustments that you'd like made to the CIP. Um, we have between now and it'll have to be published in the paper in early September, um, to meet requirements. Um, otherwise, it's pretty together and a, a guide for the next few years. Um, we're finalizing the operating budget now, making changes from the conversation tonight. Um, on the twenty second, next week, we're going to do the revenue neutral hearing. And resolution, um, to exceed the revenue neutral rate, if you, um, choose to do that. And then, um, we'll have the budget hearing on September twelfth, and then finally approve the budget on, um. Nine twenty five, my ni- my dates can't be right there, anyway, those two meetings in September, one will be the hearing and one will be the budget approval. And it'll be, um, we are in the final stretch, um, with the operating budget. Making accommodations that we need to make and, um, getting it together. Twenty six, it should be the twenty sixth, or twelfth and twenty sixth, so. Anything else you'd like, so I think it's been a great exchange tonight, this is how I like work sessions to go and we take away from it. The action we need to, to follow through on and, uh, hopefully everyone got to put their opinions out there, it's been a good exchange tonight. Is there anything else you'd like to cover in the work session?
I don't, there's nothing I want to cover, I just have a question, and it's only because I was watching this as I was driving here, um, and I'm sorry about that. I mean, I wasn't actually, actually. I know, but you know what I mean, um, so a question about the railroad crossing, so what's up with Hundred Fifty Ninth Street? So like, we're being pressed to do all this, and then like, I go across the Hundred Fifty Ninth, they've got a huge. Railroad thing there, I mean, is that in their plan? I know that's not even in our city, but I just wondered like, we're being tar- you know, not targeted, but.
We, we're choosing to address our at grade. I would assume they're doing the same, to be really honest, it's a little bit different, they have a cemetery in the way. And some things like that, it may not be an easy, but I would assume every city is trying to get funding to remove that. As many of those at grade crossings.
I just went across it the other day and I was like, well, I wonder if this is on the.
You would think so. I was thinking that too, I was like, that's when I go.
I thought our study was going to go all the way down to Hundred Fifty Ninth. Was it not just Hundred Seventy Fifth?
No, actually, um, the, BNSF and, uh, Wilson and Company. W- we're, we're submitting an application with, um, the city of Fort Scott. Because it's the whole corridor, uh, mainly, I say the whole corridor, it's mainly them and us. But in order not to compete against the same amount of funding, they combine the two together. To make it, number one, a stronger application, number two, not have to compete within the same region. So they'll, they'll mainly look through this corridor, if Alatha wanted to look at it, they would have to, you know, submit their own. Um, some cities do look at it, I know Emporia, when I was there, we looked at it, um, I think they did receive some funding for a study just this year. Um, the railroads, they look at their main corridors and where they see a major. Uh, increase in usage, uh, I think in Emporia, there was like a twenty five or fifty percent increase. In train traffic they're projecting over the next ten years, uh, so that was one of their main corridors that they use. BNSF indicated that this is a main corridor that they've targeted for improvements, and that's one of the reasons that they wanted to partner with us. Uh, to address that, one of the other issues is that we, we have a, a growth going on up around Hundred Seventy Fifth Street. As we improve the One Sixty Nine corridor, there's a pretty narrow gap between One Sixty Nine and the railroad tracks. So, wh- when we look at doing any type of interchanges on One Sixty Nine. We have to be aware of the impact to immediately going up to another rail crossing or, or underpass. So we need to coordinate those efforts with KDOT and with BNSF, so that's kind of why we're trying to get these projects going at the same time. We do have a, a developer that's looking up at the north end of our, uh, city limits. That would have an impact on the, the crossing up there, so we have to start looking at that, discussing that with the developer for set packs. Um, you know, you're talking like a thousand feet each direction when you do a crossing from the tracks.
That's what I'm saying, Hundred Eighty Third would be a nightmare with all those houses right there. Like you're basically, they're all going to be gone.
Things are going to eat up so much space.
But that's what that study does, they come in and they look at all the options, so an over, an overpass in that, you know, typically you've got a. Two thousand foot to ramp up and come down, underpasses are a little less than that, but they also said those are twice as expensive. So they'll come back and they'll look at all the options, um, and then su- make a suggestion of what they would recommend.
Thank you for that, I was curious, I was watching, hearing.
Great. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries three zero zero, have a good night, guys.